Yeah.
Anybody else wants to raise their hand?[4.65][4.65](Laughter).
Can you tell us who will?
Okay, we'll go ahead and start the Wilmer City Council work session for Tuesday, September 4th at 5:00 PM. First is, we have the 2017 auditor presentation. Mr. Olkins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have with us tonight David Early with the firm of Westburg-Eishens. They have audited the city's accounts for a number of years. He's here to talk to the council and go over what they have and make some comments and answer any questions that you may have. So with that, Mr. Early.
Welcome, Dave. Glad you're here.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm just gonna kinda give a brief overview of the audit and, you know, just discuss some of your significant funds. Hopefully you can follow along here. First thing on page number four, I like to show this particular graph just to kinda demonstrate how dependent upon LGA and governmental units outside of the city for most of your general fund revenue. As you can see, you consistently rely on intergovernmental revenue, 35% of your budget, and that's been pretty consistent the last four years. And that's just one of the things that, you know, it's outside your direct control, but obviously you always have some influence on it, and that's always a push for every city to hopefully keep that number up to keep up with inflation. And obviously, LGA's been one of those things that every year, there's a push to try to increase it, try to keep up, because it's very important to most cities to keep that up there, because if you had to rely on property taxes, it'd be very difficult to operate your city, so. Any comments or questions on that? On the next page, this graph is just kinda showing your fund balances, and this combines your general fund and your capital improvement fund, which is, the capital improvements meaning things you're not bonding for. As you can see, you know, over the last four years, you actually have been spending down your fund balance, but overall, if you look at your fund balance compared to what you typically spend, you still are in very good shape. Now, your fund balance policy actually says you're supposed to be at 100% of your next year's budget, and I know like 2018 budget, you're actually around 17 million is what you plan on spending. So really, your fund balance at the end of '17 doesn't really tie into what your policy states in terms of being at 100%. And so that may be something that you just need to revisit. The important thing is that you do have a policy in place, but you may have to look at modifying that somewhat, because it kinda limits you on what you can do as far as spending down the fund balance.
One of the things that we talked about is that we need to have at least 50%, correct?
Correct. The very minimum is basically what you need in order to fund the city for five to six months, because of the timing of the cash coming in, you don't receive property taxes or your LGA until five or six months after your end.
And so, what you're suggesting here is that the city would just review that policy, bring it back, and then if they wanted to change that, they would change that, and that'd be something that Mr. Olkins would work with our finance chair on, correct?
Right, right. Because I mean, ideally, you wanna set a limit that you don't have to revisit.
Right.
You know, and something that everyone's familiar with, at least having like a minimum threshold.
Is that minimum state bond fund balance a state statute or law, or where's it written?
It's not state statutes. It's, it really is more of a minimum recommendation. The state auditor would say anywhere between 40 to 50% minimum, and again, it has to do with just timing of receiving most of your funding. If you received funding every month, you know, you wouldn't need to maintain as high a balance, but at a minimum, you wanna have the five to six months of expenses just because of the timing of receipts.
So it's, that's a recommendation, basically, from the state auditor? It isn't, it isn't written in stone, or?
No, there's no state statutes that tell you what you have to have.
Okay, but it does affect our bond rating also?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And so basically, we could adjust that, Councilmember Christiansen, if we chose to.
Right.
And that was when we had our meeting, talked last week in regards to this. It's one of the things we recommended we bring back at a future meeting, is to find out where the council's comfortable at.
Sure.
Can I just ask you another question? I know when we met, I asked you what other cities' averages were, and I can't remember what you told us.
It's very common to be at that about 70% range.
Yeah, okay.
That's pretty common, anywhere from 70 up to 100%, but.
All right, thank you.
On the next page, page number six, the, this is just kinda giving you a breakdown of what you have in your general fund, as far as, these numbers are things that are considered what, well, it's called committed fund balance, and those are types, are basically things that are your priorities as far as setting aside. These are numbers that the council actually is supposed to pass a resolution and affirm that this is your intended purpose for that, and that's one thing that I'm recommending, is that you actually go through and, in a resolution, say, these are the levels of fund balance that we want, and this is the purpose that we're using it for. In those resolutions, you can have those resolutions passed by the end of the year and determine the dollar amount after the end of the year, but it's important that you actually specify your intentions prior to your end. And majority of these balances really are things that you've just been doing from past practice versus actually putting in a resolution.
So then again, this is another thing that will be coming to us that we need to do.
Any comments, questions? Okay. The following page, we, what I have here is just showing what your outstanding debt is, and this is debt that's not related to the waste treatment, and then we're also comparing it to what your fund balances are, and as you can see, there's a few of the funds that actually have enough resources in them to pay off the debt, and if you look in grand total, your grand total of debt was 9.8 million, your resources were about 7 million. So I mean, as far as the money available to pay the debt, those, that fund balance is very strong. And typically, what happens is, when you have excess in the debt service, once the bond is paid off, that money gets moved to your capital improvement fund and is available for future use then, so. And one reason some of these funds have actually overaccumulated is just because maybe some projects came in under budget, and so you had excess money. For instance, in 2017, 1.38 million got transferred from your capital projects to the debt service because that was money that was not spent on that specific project.
And so this is another area that'll be coming back to us to clean this up, because if we pay this off early, then we don't have those expenses. So Councilmember Nelson, we bringing that in a future meeting.
Yeah, some of the bonds will have specific call dates, and you just can evaluate that whether or not you wanna pay some of those off early, so. All right, and then the next page, another one of your major funds is the Waste Treatment And you, in the past, you've had a rate study done, and you've implemented increases, and the Waste Treatment Fund is actually operating very well. You've built up the necessary reserves that was recommended in terms of one year's worth of debt service plus about three to six months of expenses. So as it currently sits, the Waste Treatment Fund looks very good, and I know you're having another rate study done, so that should kind of be, enable you to kinda fine-tune some of that stuff. You know, the Waste Treatment is one of those things where you are constantly having an update, you know, you've obviously had to borrow significant sums of money to upgrade that, and there's always ongoing needs, but as it sits now, it's in very good shape.
And then again, this is another area that, so what Dave is suggesting is, we have one year of debt service plus three to six months of operating, and if you look at the numbers, you can see that we're substantially over that, and so one of the things that the finance director is working on is evaluating which of those potentially could be paid down. Some of those, as we talked, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before, some of those are at the point where you wouldn't wanna pay them down because they're little or no-interest loans, and some of them aren't, we would not be able to pay them off. So that'll be a discussion that'll be coming in the future also. That will be coming, the finance director will go through Councilmember Nelson and bring that to us, and then we can have that conversation, so. Councilmember Schwantas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope that we'd also see some kind of information in regard to obligations for things that are upcoming, such as a salty water discharge, because knowing that that's going to be a very large expense for us, I wouldn't mind seeing some funds in there, planning ahead for that type of a payoff or for that type of an investment, so I hope that we would see estimates on what that might cost us, we can include that in our decision.
All right, and then on the next slide, this is the investments that you had on hand at the end of the year, and what I've done is, they're grouped by maturity, and the main thing I wanna stress on here is that you have a significant amount of your investments that are in the six to 10-year range, which kind of gives you some issues in terms of interest rate changes, because as interest rate changes with the bonds, you know, the value of the bonds is gonna fluctuate. The good news is, if you hold it till maturity, you don't really realize those losses, but your investment policy basically says, your order of priority are, you wanna maintain your principal, and you wanna have liquidity, and then you're worried about the return. So my evaluation is saying that having that much out there in the six to 10 years doesn't really give you the liquidity if you would need to sell those investments, and so I think your investment policy should actually address that in terms of how much, if you wanna be heavily weighted one way or the other, or try to avoid being heavily weighted one way or the other. And again, it's basically just because of the interest rate fluctuations which impact the investments, so. You don't wanna be forced to sell them when you're at a loss, essentially, is what you're trying to avoid on that.
And again, so if you take a look from 2016 to 2017, we had a 4% increase in that area, but in talking with the finance director in regards to this, a lot of that money was moved when we, when there was some uncertainty on what was gonna be happening with the city clerk doing the investments, being moved over to the finance director. So the finance director, when he puts the other 17 million, right, that we have there, those numbers don't look quite as stark as these numbers look. They look more favorable, so you wanna address that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if the council remembers some of the monthly reports that we've presented to you in the past, is that when finance took over the duties of doing the investments, there was a lot of those that were out in the out years. We are shy in the one to three-year ladder part of our investments, and so a lot of those that have matured are liquid right now, and we're working with a local institution to fill that gap in the one to three, which as soon as they get reclassified from cash or liquid to investments, it will lower that percentage and will fill in that one to three-year mark.
And that was about 17 million, right?
I believe it's 12 to 13.
12 to 13, okay. Any questions on that at all?
When we met, we also had the conversation about needing to look at our, we're talking about spending some of our cash, but we will have to do it in conjunction with the cash flow analysis from these investments to see whether we can spend some of the money that has been, that is out there for that length of time. So we had that conversation also with needing to look at both sides of the investments and the cash that's available to spend.
Right, you're currently not in a position where you have to sell some investments to do that, but you don't wanna get to that point, is what, what you wanna avoid really, so. All right, then, I'm gonna actually skip ahead to, it could be page number 12. Electronic version there. Under the section, the recommended policy improvements, the budget management, and this is, you know, if you remember from last year, we talked about that, there is some departments that actually went over budget for the year, and there were no budget amendments to basically have the council recognize and approve that the departments went over. You know, in total, you've never gone over your total budget, but that, when you pass your budget at the department level, you should have a mechanism to approve any department that would exceed the budget, and that could be as simple as having the administrator say that the funds are available and recognizing that you will go over, but for the most part, there should be some action taken on it to recognize the overage and essentially approve it.
Councilmember Mesky.
Didn't we hear that last year as well?
Yeah, yes, I brought that up last year.
Okay, we should probably fix that. Thank you.
And then the fund balance policy and investment policy, those are two things that I discussed previously. On the next page, what I have here is financial statement findings, and this is a finding of something that we recommend that you take corrective action. We had made a proposed adjustment to the construction of progress of about $2.7 million. So essentially, you had all these projects that were in place that hadn't been capitalized, and a good share that was related to the playground, that was, you know, essentially all donated money, but the city does end up owning the asset, and so that should be something that ends up on your books as an asset, and so that was what we call a material adjustment, and that's the reason for the finding. And so essentially, that's one thing that, you know, we would recommend that you do take action to, to fix that so that it doesn't happen in the future. Any comments on that? Otherwise, the next.
And for this one in particular, the finance director and I spoke about this, you know, we could have the same thing coming up with the curling club, because we could have a similar arrangement, is what happened with the playground, so we just have to make sure and track that a little closer, and the finance director's aware of that.
Yep. Essentially, any donated asset that becomes your asset, you still wanna include that as a capital asset, so. On page number 14, this section is talking about Minnesota legal compliance. We do some testing on different things that the state auditor wants us to look at. And this one, 2017-002 relates to bid documentation. We looked at some of the projects that were bid out in 2017, but the documentation was not maintained, essentially bids that weren't accepted were not maintained, and you actually corrected this in terms of, you've recently adopted a new record retention policy, and so essentially, that just needs to be communicated to all the department heads so that everyone knows what the policy should be. So not much more on that, other than the communication part, since you've already adopted it.
Administrator Holland, have we done that with all of our departments, or are they all aware of it, and do we have some documentation so that we know that they're aware of this new policy?
We're gonna go through this with the staff and reiterate the findings with him once again, but we haven't done it yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
What, if the state comes and doesn't audit, what happens to like the city of Wilmer if we don't comply with some of your?
I don't know that there's any, anything in the law that they come back at you as far as assessing you, some penalties or anything like that, but it's just basically, they do set it out in statute, but they don't set out like penalties if it's not followed.
Okay, thank you.
And then the second legal compliance finding we had, in 2017, the state actually passed a new law that was effective July 1st regarding electronic funds transfer, and so what it does is, it basically lays out your requirements. If you're going to allow someone to transfer funds, you have to have certain things in place, and currently, the way it's set up, you haven't done that in all the steps that are basically set out in that statute. I mean, the biggest thing would be that every year, you have to specifically authorize who can approve fund transfers. You know, you currently have in place who's allowed to sign checks and so forth, I mean, all that's adopted each year, but with this one, you need a specific person delegated to authorize the transfers, and it also requires you to essentially have a separate payroll account. Since all your payroll is done through direct deposit, and you pay all your payroll taxes electronically, it says you should have an impressed fund, or impressed account essentially that is strictly just for payroll, and this was something that actually just impacts you just because you're a home charter city. It doesn't, it wasn't in effect for other cities that don't have the home charter, so.
And Mr. Holland, we're working on addressing this one as well, correct?
That's right.
And then will we get an update when that's done, on those two things?
I put it in my calendar, and so it'll be done, and I'll update you as we do that, yes.
Is there, is there a reason a statutory city would not have to do that?
No, I'm not sure why they would have done it, because it, a lot of it is just basically having good internal controls in place, and so it's, it's kinda unusual that it only applies to the home charter. All right, and then the last page that I have, this is just a summary of last year's findings that have been corrected, and that's just to basically follow up and say, yes, they've been resolved, and just to have that in the financials and reporting that they have been resolved. Any comments or questions on anything else, or?
Dave, thank you for your report. Thank you for your thoroughness, and I know that you met with Councilmember Nelson and myself in regards to this, and we also met on a separate occasion where we went through some issues that were able to be resolved just through that internal communication, and we appreciate that, we appreciate the work that you do, so. Mr. Olkins, is there anything we need to do at this point, or?
There's no formal action that's required from the council. This report has been certified to the state auditor's office as required by statute, and that was certified to them by June 30th.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you for your report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move number 11 up, Rob. Oh, I got written down here that I'm supposed to go to Rob, so I'm supposed to go to Sean instead? Okay.
Sorry about that, Mayor, we had a little bit of passing the baton here going on with some of these projects, so. In front of you is the...
We're talking number 11, which is donation of dog park equipment from Wilmer Noon Lions to the city of Wilmer.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you is a, basically a request to accept equipment to be added to the dog park, the, actually, what did they put it, they listed it as something different in here, the leash-free park, I don't remember what it's called in here, but, the dog park at Lions Park, and this is the Lions Club, Wilmer Noon Lions, that wants to donate a device that you'll see on the next page, it's a set of ramps or a series of ramps for the small dog area, and what we'd like to do, what they would like to do is donate that to the city, and the city public works guys would install it, like we've done some of the other pieces of equipment. Now, it varies a little bit from the car form in front of you, is that we were going, this is written up, that we will accept the donation, and then we would pay, we would pay for the device. What I would recommend is that we let the New Lions pay for the device, they've picked it out, they know what they want, they know what they're recommending, it's on the next page, and then we accept the device itself instead of the cash to pay for it, and then that way, we wouldn't have to refund them any differences, and it's, I think it's cleaner that way. So that's an alternative that's not on here, and that's the way I would recommend we go in this particular situation. Recommended would be to accept the donation still from the Wilmer Noon Lions, for Lions Park, for the equipment as designated.
Okay, only one question, and we have someone from the Lions behind us here too, she may wish to speak as well, but, so if they buy it, then they're gonna have to pay sales tax on it, versus if we buy it, we don't have to pay sales tax on it?
That's probably true, yep. I don't know how their financial status is set up, if that's the case or not, but I would, that's potentially correct.
Thanks, one other question, too.
Do we know that, Mr. Scott? You're getting flat-footed, just like the rest of us, so, or the baton's being handed.
I believe you're correct, Mayor, that the city would not pay sales tax, but the private party likely would.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Just another question, I know from buying park equipment, that there's differences in warranties on things too, if, who owns it, who installs it, and so I guess that would be a question that I would have, just to make sure that if the, if the Lions are listed as the owner, and something happens to it, how does the warranty work with that? So that's just a question that I would have.
Well, we'd be listed as the owner either way, because it's an hour park, but if that's, if there's more questions than answers, then I would just stick with the alternatives that's listed there below.
Okay. Councilmember Mesky.
I was just gonna ask, are the Lions aware of the sales tax issue? I'd move to approve stat's recommendation that was offered.
Okay, so we'll move forward to fast recommendation. Would you like to make any comments?
No, yeah, I'll make one.
If you can come up to the mic, please, and identify who you are, and then, I know you're with the Lions, so.
Yeah, I'm Pamela Adam, and I am the current president of the Lions organization, and we'd like to continue every year with our fundraising event at the Lions Park and continue to purchase agility equipment, so this will probably be an ongoing annual request.
Great, thank you. And then for her convenience, and I know the staff will work with her, but is she to go, you or to go to Rob?
Since it's public works, staff's gonna be putting this in, let's go to me.
Okay, so work directly with Mr. Christiansen. Other questions? On behalf of the council, wanna thank you for your donation, your continued improvement out at Lions Park. Councilmember Nelson and I were early adopters to this process when it first came along, and it was, it was sure fun to get that Lions Park up, the dog park working, and to see you guys continue investing in that is really appreciated, so thanks for all you do, so. Thank you very much. Now, you can stick around for the rest of the meeting if you want, but you may have better things to do, but it's up to you, so, okay. Councilmember Mesky.
I apologize for that motion, I forgot we're in a working session, but is this something that we can just move to the council tonight? I mean, it's, it's not a controversial item. We're gonna wait.
It's fine, it's fine with me, it doesn't matter to me, it's up to the council. Are you recommending that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I just don't see a reason why you wouldn't move forward with the project, you can get some more stuff in that dog park, so.
They wanna get it in before winter?
I would guess. Are you okay with that, Mr. Christiansen?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I would say, we can, with the head nodding I saw tonight, that we can go forward with the project, and then you guys can put it on whichever agenda you would like, but we'll, we'll move forward with it. If you'd like it to move it tonight, we'll do it and be done with it.
I think it might be nice to give the director an opportunity to talk with the Lions group to find out which way they prefer to have it, whoever purchase it, whether it be purchased through the city or the Lions Club, it would allow you that opportunity to work it out, but.
If I may, Councilmember Schwantas, the idea of the city purchasing, I'm sorry, of the Lions purchasing and donating the equipment was mine late today, so their idea all along was that they would donate the cash and the city would purchase it, so I think that's been taken care of.
Okay, then I'm good.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, you have a resolution here accepting a donation of $1,800, so if that's the motion that you're gonna be moving forward to the regular meeting, I think you're ready to go. I think if you're accepting the actual equipment, that would come later, because they would have to purchase it first and then donate it.
Okay, let's hold on it. Okay. So next is the mayor's 2019 proposed budget. So Steve gets our PowerPoint ready here. Again, this year, the budget process was put together with the city administrator, Mr. Holland, Steve Olkins, our finance director, and then this year, similar to what I have done the last four years, is I've had the person responsible for finance also sit in on those meetings. At the last meeting, it was recommended that the rest of the council be made aware of the meetings that are happening, so if they chose to attend, they could. That was done, and so before the meetings that we had in regards to this, the entire council was copied on the notice that we were having the meeting, the only one that showed up at the meeting was Councilmember Nelson again. So with the budget today, you'll find that I am proposing a balanced budget, and you can go ahead and go through the slides here, Mr. Olkins. You're gonna have to help me along here, because I don't have them, or do I have them?
It should be a part of your packet, Mr. Olkins.
They are there, okay, yep, okay. So the mayor's draft budget proposal for 2019 is an operating, general operating funds for 2019 will be 16 million, 46,752 dollars, and the capital improvements funds for 2019 will be 8 million, 185,552 dollars. What you'll see on this is that... What you'll see on this is that I will be giving a brief overview, similar to what we did last year. Mr. Okens will be doing an overview of the capital projects and then Mr. Holland will be talking about the general funds. This will be the second year we're doing it this way, we've never done it this way before. Last year I was cautiously optimistic, I'm less optimistic this year than I was last year, but we're going to give it another year just to see if we can make it work for another year. But, I think we've had probably about five or six meetings in regards to this and so the information in how Councilmember Nelson and I have received it is good, but the, how the presentation goes is, is different than what we're all used to. And again, so this is the second year we've done it this way, but if you guys like it this way, I'm fine with it, but it's however you guys want, so I would appreciate feedback. I know last year I had heard that a lot of you didn't like the way it was presented, but we're trying it for two years in a row to see it. So, under projects, under pavement management plan, there's $4,800,000, that's an increase of a little over a million dollars and you'll see those numbers when Mr. Okens presents that on the pavement management plan. And then the focus on capital spending this year will be on our stormwater projects, we'll be putting $100,000 towards the Menards Phase One Plan. And this is what came out of the retreat, is that we wanted to look at the Menards piece. Those dollars had not been included in the budget and were not in the revised numbers that we did last year, so this will be the Phase One of the Menards project. $100,000 will also be remaining in place for new playground equipment, for the replacement of that, and so that was a council priority as well, so these two areas are council priorities. You'll notice that the budget is balanced, the capital projects will be funded and paid back within the limits of the budget as we've adopted by policy. Our total increases for salary for our employees, the council will remember, was a 2% increase, it's 2% for 2017, 2% for 2018, and 2% for 2019. What you don't see in here is the increase in cost of our health insurance costs and those costs were substantial. I believe it was right around $900,000 was for the insurance portion of the package that we settled with our employees. And again, we said we wanted to be the employer of choice and one of those was setting ourselves apart as providing that health benefit to our employees. Those numbers are not solid yet because we have not adopted the insurance plan that we're going to offer. The HR director and the city administrator are working on those agreements as we speak. They've had the preliminary numbers have come in, but they have not made a presentation to us yet, so we put a $900,000 hold on that so that we have that amount of money in the budget for that area. You'll notice that the levy increase is for a 5% increase in the levy from 2017, I'm sorry, 2018, 2019, and that 5% increase equates to $275,755. So, a lot of times we're asked about local option sales tax, we're asked about different ways that we tax our citizens and people say, well, why don't you just simply add it to the levy? You can see here that, that a 5% increase of the levy only brings in $275,000. So if we're wanting to do a project within the city of over $2 million, $2.5 million, you can do the math yourself to, to realize quickly what the increase in the levy would have to be to equate to that. This also uses $1,449,080 from reserve funds to help with the budget with the capital improvements that we're looking at doing for our streets. $300,000 each from the stabilization emergency balance fund and in the past, that fund has had $1.3 million in it and so that will take that down to $1 million in those emergency stabilizations. So it'll be a total of $2 million in that fund and we've talked about doing that in the past, I talked about that last year in the budget, I talked about that and we've talked about it off and on this year, but this is the first place we will see that we're actually taking that money and dropping that amount down to the million dollars. So with that, I will now turn it over to the finance director and he will cover the capital budget and then after that, the city administrator will cover the department budgets and approve, and provide his observations on the budget, so, Councilmember Nelson?
Just wondered if anyone had any questions on the figures that were in there, if everybody was good with it?
I think we can make, maybe wait till questions to the very end, if that's okay. Councilmember, I mean, Mr. Okens, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The capital improvement program was preliminarily submitted to the council back on July 30th. Those were with preliminary numbers that I also had made comments that depending on funding availability and the total budget when it came together could have an effect on those dollars and those projects that were presented to you back in July. If I could just again, go back and just do a brief history of the process that we use for capital, both for the vehicles and the capital improvements. In April, the departments are sent notifications that their requests and recommendations should be submitted to a staff committee that reviews them and has the rating criteria that we use. There's a six-point rating criteria, each category is awarded up to 10 points and then reviewed and then recommendations made to the mayor and administrator who review those recommendations, do a preliminary sizing of the program they want and then once we get into the budget process, narrows it down based on availability. A quick description of those six categories is the legal mandates. We look at if they are, is a mandated timeframe for compliance and/or a financial impact on the city. The second item is the maintenance of existing assets, if it's going to maintain or extend the useful life, life of a current asset, if it's changing in the operating costs, either, either a positive or negative. The third area is the sustainability. We look at, is it fair to all and represent a fiscal responsible decision? The fourth area is reduce or offset costs. We look at the request and is it, is beneficial to operations and maintenance, a cost savings? Is it a reduction of a cost to the city through a partnership, a grant or a cost sharing or, or something similar to that? And if it is, makes, makes items more efficient? The fifth item that we look at is the critical public safety needs or concerns and does it reduce the risks to public or private property? Does it help response for emergency services? Does it improve the safety for the citizens and taxpayers of Wilmer? The sixth and final area that we look at and rate is, does it meet council priorities? Is it something that they have got or the council, you have in your comprehensive or strategic plan and is it deemed important to multiple members of the council? So again, there are 10, up to 10 points assigned to each one of those and then, as you remember from the presentation in July, I think some of the highest ratings were in the 40, mid 40s or high 40s and so it's not a, just a rubber stamp to the 60-point total. Then in May, again, staff does go through the review and in June, the mayor gets the initial list. July, again, we review it when we're working on the budget and then tonight in September, you see what that proposed list is. Some of the changes that you'll see here in vehicles is that Public Works, they initially had a dump truck in here, that was removed as well as one mower from your previous list. The police department, one squad car, it was reduced by one squad car. Waste stream plant was left the same, again, as we talked about a little bit earlier on waste treatment, it has its funding source and, and we're in the process of a rate study and we'll be looking at their capital improvements and so the funds there are sufficient to handle their requests for capital. The mayor talked about his pavement management program of 4.8. We do have a partnership there where we get municipal state aid through the gas tax of $1 million, that would require us to do a bonding of 3.8 million. Cooperative projects that we've looked at, shared funding and these cooperative projects, if the funding or mechanism is not successful or does not come to avail, be available to the city, the projects at this point would not be moved forward and, and the council would have to reconsider how they would, if they want to have alternate funding sources. The Robbins Island parking, that was a local option sales tax projection, if that would happen to pass. The fire was a grant for a civil defense siren and the airport, again, that's state and federal funding and that would have to be in the five-year funding mechanism by state and federal funds, so that's for the runaway rehab. Moving forward into projects that are looked at, information technology, new servers and storage arrays were the same as before, the fire auto extraction equipment, thermal imaging camera and the HVAC at the fire station. Moving forward, projects for the park development, playground equipment, the mayor talked about in his opening remarks of $100,000 as well as resurfacing of the Hilltop and Sperry tennis courts for pickleball and, and just resurfacing those outdoor courts. The Public Works, the brine mixing station, which the council got a presentation last winter, they tried to do, or they, in cooperation with the county, changed to a different mechanism for snow and ice and, and treating the streets, so it worked well, so they had recommended that we get stationed at Public Works Garage. Civic Center, the bleacher replacement has been on there a couple of years and so those are some of the categories that I mentioned earlier, safety, cost savings, those types of things. Cardinal Arena, aquatic center, resurface pool, the council re-appropriated dollars this year for that. The wastewater treatment, Eagle Lake improvements, we are still working with Canoe Way County for those and we'll take those into consideration in our rate study and the dollars available in the waste treatment plant. And this is a summary of those funding mechanisms. The general fund will transfer out 1.5 million, the bonding we mentioned at 3.8, wastewater of 646,000 and the partners, which consisted of the municipal state aid of a million, the airport of 900,000, local option sales tax and the grant for the civil defense sirens. With that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Mesky?
Just one question, is that ratio for pavement plan, it's like about a four to one, is that a consistent ratio for getting the state aid with those dollars?
The state aid amounts that we get from municipal state aid is based on miles and, and maybe the Public Works Director can talk about the funding, but we get annually about a million dollars. And so we take that into consideration when we look at what streets and, and we communicate. Another factor that's driven and determines the level of streets and even the streets that are done are the assessments, the, I believe it's avenues that, it's on the address side of, of streets, so there's kind of a big mix that we put together in that, but the million dollars is an annual allotment that we get for-
So accelerating the pavement plan doesn't mean additional state-
Does not drive that at all, that's a set number amount that's determined.
You can get money, you can get, you can draw ahead if you want, but that just puts you down the road.
You, you can build up to three years of, of allotments, I believe, and/or you can borrow ahead three years, as the mayor alluded to, and then it basically fills it back in and so if you wanted to advance up to three years, you would be restricted, that you wouldn't be able to do any state aid work for up to three years.
But those state, state aid dollars, do they have inflation worked into them in the subsequent years?
I'd have to defer to the Public Works Director as far as the funding mechanism of how they determine municipal state aid monies, if there's an inflation factor or if it's determined on the gas tax and those types of things.
All right, all right.
Or appropriation of the legislator.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Mesky, that state aid dollars are roughly half and half based on miles and population and so it's reevaluated on, on any given year, every couple of years, but as far as inflation rates, I'm not sure that's factored in at that point.
Councilmember Schwannus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a 5% levy increase totaling that $275,000 and I'm assuming that there's been a growth in the tax base. I'm wondering if you could speak to, what is the actual impact to the typical taxpayer? Will they see that 5% increase or will it be something less than that because of growth in the tax base?
That 5% that's factored in there by direction of the mayor included the growth of new construction. That was about in the, I forget the exact number, but that's a 5% on the tax rate. We've, you know, somewhat talked about a 5% on, on the dollar levy or the tax rate, so this would be approximately a 5% on the tax rate. So, if a homeowner's property value stayed the same, they could simply have a 5% on the city portion only, which is in the high 20%, 20 cents on the dollar, I believe, on the, on their rate. We're about 27, 28% of the tax rate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Why would, why wouldn't we dip into our reserves for that $275,000 instead of increasing it 5%? Because that 5% increase isn't the same to every property owner in Wilmer because some are taxed at a different rate, commercial, industrial versus residential, but why wouldn't we dip in the reserves for that? That's $275,000.
Council could certainly do that, that would be council's option to do.
I would suggest that, I mean, it's, everything is increasing in price as we go here, not only taxes, but by a car, gasoline. We have a lot of residents that are retired on limited incomes and a lot of them own homes and 5% doesn't seem like a whole lot to maybe us up here, but to some of these people, it's, it's quite a bit. I mean, I get phone calls often from several retired ladies complaining about the cost of living in Wilmer and I would suggest at least considering, using the reserve for $275,000 instead of increasing it 5%.
And, you know, that certainly is something the council can consider. I mean, you'll, you'll see that, and I mentioned it in my opening comments, that, you know, we are taking down the emergency reserves by the 300,000 per year, so a total of 600,000 there, so, you know, that was kind of the direction of some of what I heard the council asking and so those were considered in the equation, but Steve, do you have an answer for that as well?
Mr. Mayor, the action actually by the council, and we've talked about the tax levy, does not have to be decided tonight. That has to be certified to the county auditor by the end of September. It is scheduled to have that discussion come back to the council at your next meeting on the 17th. The process for that, again, is the council can set a levy that can be decreased but not increased at that point in time, so, and there are three meetings scheduled for descriptions for the general public. The first one is to talk about revenues and the preliminary capital improvements. That is scheduled for next Tuesday, the 11th, at the fire station from 6 to 8. The second one is scheduled on the 18th at, at the same location and that one was agenda, tentative agenda was to talk about fixed charges like utilities, salaries, those types of things versus the, the flexible charges. And then the final one is to talk about the overall operations and then a summary review of the capital improvements. So, that is an item that I've put down as a list for discussion, same with any other questions that may arise tonight or in any future meetings so that we can come back with answers and/or alternatives if that's what the council wishes. The council does have, and, and maybe a later presentation by the coalition, we've had discussions about levy limits and they are not in place at this point, but we also do comparative rates for all regional centers and, and Wilmer's city portion has been one of the lowest in all regional centers in the state of Minnesota, so that's certainly, as you alluded, something the council can talk about and, and give direction on, on what you want to do, again, on the 17th or at a meeting prior to the end of the month, that whatever levy you decide on can be lowered but cannot be increased once certified to the county auditor.
Right, and that, and that meeting would take place, or that conversation for setting the levy will be in two weeks, if that's not tonight. Councilmember Nelson?
I just, I just want to make sure that if we don't raise the levy, that, that we're understanding this clearly because we're already talking about, in order to balance the budget as it's presented, we're already talking about spending $600,000 from the cash reserves in addition to the reserve funds from- in addition to the reserve funds from two years ago that we didn't spend. So we are spending down our cash already at 1,449,000. So in order to take another 275 from cash reserves, we would have to go back to the statements that were made by the auditor to look at or reduce our budget somehow. Am I correct?
That would, that would be the case. Um, as, as you're alluding to, the carryover or the excess dollars from from 17, that has been a practice of the council, and so even the discussion by the auditor about what level the fund balance is, the council by practice has spent a portion of the fund balance every year uh and and carryover or given to the mayor to be appropriated. The additional this year that's being recommended is the 600,000 that the mayor spoke to in his opening remarks. So, uh, again, the the levels of fund balances and and those things would would and should be discussed in the, in the discussion.
Yeah, correct. Councilmember Mesky followed by Swantus followed by Christensen.
Um, just a quick, I know we've, I've seen it a couple of years ago, but maybe bringing the other cities, uh, that you were talking at, Wilmer sits in some of the lower percentile. If you could bring some of that information about the levy at the next meeting, that would be helpful as we talk about what that level should be.
Yeah, Mr. Olkins asked to have it, asked if I wanted it tonight, I said no, if you guys ask for it, bring it, but so he did offer it, so I have seen it.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, so he anticipated that you would ask that.
And one thing that the mayor administrator and Councilman Nelson and I discussed was that we get that information from the League of Minnesota Cities, they publish that. They have not published the 2017 rates at this point because of some delay in reporting to the counties. And so as soon as that is available, we will update it. Um, we would have two years, uh, two years old, um, but that is really not pertinent. So we, that's why we've kind of waited as well to compile that.
We were given that last.
Right, we had it, yeah, Councilmember Nelson said we had it last year, we did have it last year, but, so what we're going to do is we're going to take the 2016 numbers and compare them to 2019 numbers, and that's why I said this doesn't make sense, so, but as soon as we have it, we'll get it. Councilmember Swantus followed by Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that it sounds really attractive to our constituents to say we're not going to increase the levy at all, but I would caution us in regard to that because it's not just a short-term decision that we're making. For every percentage that we do not increase it by, it's not just a loss for the 2019 budget, it's a loss for every year thereafter, because if we now need to increase the levy the following year by that 275 plus an additional dollars that we need, now it's not just a 5% increase, but it's a 10% increase, or you get the math. So I would just caution us that, that that sounds really attractive, but it's not just a one-year impact, it's something that will impact us for the long run.
Councilmember Christensen.
Looking for additional income in in the future years, 19, 20, 21, you know, we've had a lot of construction in the, this past year and in 2017, and there's more coming. Somewhere we need to factor that in. Um, I, I know you factored in into into the budget here as well as unspent funds, and unspent funds have been described tonight as uh spending it on our cash reserves. They're actually funds that were unspent, so they're available to us for whatever we want to use them for. So this isn't, I don't think the cash reserves, it shouldn't be described as that, but uh, we need to keep in mind that we're going to increase our tax base because of all the construction going on, the industrial park is booming and we've given tax maybe to uh many entities and they'll be falling off uh down the road two, three, four, five, six years from now. So that, that income in in taxes is going to be ours to spend also. We probably should have that information uh at budget time. What, what, what do we project next year for uh the, the expanded tax base? I mean, there's many, many homes and duplexes and apartments going up this year along with industrial park. Could we not have that information, what is expected uh for next year? Uh, I mean, I think it would, it would be something we should be looking at. I know there would be, there would be projections, however, it, it's going to be additional money for our budget.
Um, Mr. Olkins, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but I, I think I'm right. When we take into consideration the monies that come that we didn't spend the previous years, if you go back two years ago, we had a lot of open positions that weren't filled, and so that number was higher than it is this year. If you go back even like 10 years, that number that we used to pull forward used to be a million plus.
Yep.
Um, now we're at about 900,000, um, well, high eights, but, um, so, you know, number one, that's kudos to the, to our staff, they're doing a great job of managing their budget more aggressively, um, and it's being watched overall, and the budgets are more reflective of the actual expenditures, so that's a good thing. Um, but at the same point, if we don't have those numbers coming forward, then we just get into this cycle as well, so, um, you know, I think I remember one year in the last 18 years that I've been around, I think we had one year was over $2 million that was brought forward. Um, and so, you know, now that we're at 900,000, um, you know, we are being more restrictive in, our budget is actually a more reflective budget of the services that we actually provide. So that's kudos to our staff for, for tightening those belts, so, but that's tough, so, I don't know if I answered that right or not.
Yeah, you did, Mr. Mayor, and one, if I could just add one point onto that is that in reviewing the comparison of actual revenues to budgeted for 2017, we were less than 1% of what we had projected, so, I mean, we are pretty tight on, on our projections for revenues, so.
And Mr. Olkins had mentioned the meetings that we're having, now, we've never done those before, so we've talked about doing them for the last two years, but this year we've got a framework behind that, and so that first meeting, uh, we're going to kind of gauge by what the public is telling us um at that meeting, um, and then there is an additional one meeting that potentially could happen, that would just be for follow-up cleanup questions, but we don't have that scheduled yet simply because, you know, if we don't, if we get all of our questions answered, you know, we don't want to have a meeting, just have a meeting, um, because we have to understand we're inconvenienced and our staff are going to have to do additional work, so, um, so that's kind of where we're at with that, so, um, I think I've hit everybody that asked questions, any questions? Councilmember Fagerley.
I don't want to get in the weeds, but I just have some questions on the vehicles and equipment. That rake sweeper, what is that?
That would be a field conditioner type uh unit, I believe.
For our parks?
Yes.
Okay, it's not the suck up leaves that people would put in the street once we have a program where?
It's replacing a, it's replacing a unit that they already have.
All right, and then the squad cars, are you going for explorers again, or he's gone?
Yes, yes, they are, and, and, and this is, I'm not sure if this will be the final replacement of the old uh squads or not, or if there's still uh one or two that would be an additional to this, but that's, that's the reason for some of the additional costs of that, yeah.
And that total fee, does that include the lights and decals and everything then?
Yes.
And will that be 2018s or would it be 2019s?
I'm not sure on that question, uh, when those, the timeline on ordering new squads would be.
Cause the sales are coming up on 2018, so you should be able to get a better deal now. And if we buy local again.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, uh, the pricing that we get, I don't think we can compete.
I will certainly check on that and get that information.
Well, yeah, and then the county, they're leasing, and I don't know how that's going to work, but have we looked into that for squad cars?
We have not yet, but we certainly can do that, yep.
Okay, and then the tractor for the wastewater, is that the semi?
No, that is an actual tractor.
Okay, weren't they looking at buying a semi for?
They, they, yep.
Oh, they did already, okay. Should have put John Deere or something. Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I, I talked with the sheriff last week in regards to their, to their leasing program, and that's a buy, it's a pay me now, pay me later deal, and so, um, it's exactly what Councilmember Swantus was talking about, so on the lease on the front side of it, you can, they're, they're going to save about four to $500,000 the first few years, but then when you come back into it, um, now you got to get back into the vehicle business again. And so, you know, those numbers are going to be down under 100,000, uh, when you get out, I believe he told me it was five or six, four or five years out, I think, um, it's not uh four and $500,000 savings.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, uh, when we were getting unallotted uh by the state and, and this has been some years ago, that we did sell some equipment notes, which were five year notes, uh, that we did issue for certain equipment, uh, you have five years to pay that back, but as the mayor alluded, at the end of those five years, then you're right back into, and that's why we have not explored that uh again at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see, uh, under Fire, we have auto extraction equipment again, and is it really necessary? I know the amount isn't huge, but uh, the local rescue squad has three full, fully-equipped trucks, um, and if we needed one at the fire station, couldn't we just uh talk to the county about that?
We have that as an agenda item, agenda, item number 10, so we can discuss it now or we can discuss it then, but, um, we do have that as a specific item.
Sure, I see it's in the budget, so.
Sure, right, good point. Steve, could you just, I'm sorry, Mr. Olkins, could you just address a little bit the Eagle Lake, what we're looking at doing with the Eagle Lake, I've talked about it before, about setting up the separate fund and all that?
Yeah, we have been in communications with the county on the, on the transition of the Eagle Lake system to the city. Uh, the budgets and the numbers that we presented to you tonight include $200,000 for uh kind of a starter uh review of the, the pumps and and lift stations, and I apologize, I don't know, I think there's maybe nine lift stations uh at, on, in the system. Uh, some of the discussion on the balance that will come over from the county that they have uh is the, uh, the rates or the fees for Eagle Lake system at this point are put on the property taxes, and so their collection of the second half property taxes will adjust that number, and so that number is being uh weighed until after the, the second half property taxes. Um, but we are also, as mentioned, in the process of looking at the rates, and so any kind of future capital improvements, not only for the present system, but the Eagle Lake system, will have uh those presented to you when, when the rates come back to you uh for review. Uh, the last time the council had set the rates, they were set through 2017, uh, the discussion with Eagle Lake happened at that point and wasn't finalized until just recently, so, uh, that's why that will all take place now, but that will happen before the end of the year.
Speaking of the Eagle Lake sewer district, the cash that we're receiving from them, is that in the 19 budget? It's already in there?
Yeah, $200,000 are in here for spending, the revenue, because we don't know what that revenue is, is not listed yet, so that, that revenue will get inserted once we have it.
But, but the cash, the 200,000, is that, was that the amount from the Eagle Lake source?
No, it's more than that.
That's what I thought.
Right.
But that, more than that amount is in, is not in our?
Not on the revenue side, there's only $200,000 of expenditure on it.
Okay, when will that be figured into our budget?
After the, uh, after we receive the monies from the county, after the, after the second quarter, uh, second half taxes are paid.
For 19?
For 18.
In October then?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, for your December, first meeting in December, when the council will take final action on the budget, those numbers should be available, and if available before that time, we will certainly get that information to the council.
I mean, we have, we have projections, but we want to be conservative on the revenue side rather than aggressive on the revenue, so, um, and for those of you that remember the conversation we had downstairs when we talked about this, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have to set money aside for a long time to pay for some of these things, that's what I was alluding to if you're gonna talk about that, but.
Yeah, no, um, the, uh, the rates are set and the budget is set at, at current rates uh because if you recall what the auditor said, the funds basically at this point are there, but as Councilman Swantus mentioned, you know, salty discharge and those capital, future capital costs, uh, as well as any kind of debt that we can prepay and stuff will all be factored into our rate study, and the council will have further discussion before their December meeting.
Okay, Mr. Hollander, city administrator will go over a summary of our accounts and general fund.
I'm gonna keep it brief, um, and I do have some important things that I want to say because I think it's important, uh, this is uh the most important document that the council does and the mayor does on an annual basis, I talked about that on the radio today. What's the most important document you're going to do every year, and that's the budget, uh, because that's going to decide what we can and cannot do the next year. And of course, um, as Councilman Christiansen said, you know, it's dependent upon that revenue, how much do we get? Uh, and over the years, it, in my career, it's gone up and down. Sometimes you're very fortunate and you feel rich and you think you can buy some things, and then other years, uh, you're cutting jobs and you're cutting projects, and so it can go up and down and it makes life tricky. Hopefully, every year, as we do spend the money, that we contribute to the community to make it more valuable, and so that those people on fixed incomes uh realize the potential of the money that they're paying as all people, but most importantly, those that with limited incomes. I'm just gonna uh go over a couple of things on the charts here before you. Uh, the summary of the revenues, as you can see at the bottom, there's a 2% increase uh from 2018 to 2019 is what we're projecting. Uh, so not a large increase, um, again, we go conservative with the revenues, we, we take the lower number, not the highest number, so that we make sure that we're covering all of our debts going into the future year. I will say that, um, one of the changes in there is that under the miscellaneous revenue, that's where we see a lot of the, uh, KRS lease money and transfers, and so that's different than in years past. The next two slides basically cover our expenditures in the general government fund there. I will point out, one of the significant things, changes there is under the city administrator, you see a drop of 25%. Uh, overall, in the general government, you see a drop of 7% there. That's due to, because we pulled out the human resources and gave it its own fund line item, so there's, that contributes to that, uh, overall deduction, that money didn't go away, it just moved somewhere else. I feel that it's important that as we have a human resource director and a department that we track, how much do we spend on training, how much are we spending in that department to recruit people, how much are we spending on advertising? Uh, so it's very important that we continue to do that. The last slide here, I'll want to point out that, um, under leisure services and civic center and community center, you see some increases there, and, uh, you know, we've got our new director in that line, we've got our new, uh, community center manager in that line under the community center, so you see some increases. And again, you see, uh, on the expenditures, you see about a 2% increase. That's pretty good, in fact, that's real good, and what that gives you an indication is that the mayor, uh, the finance director and the staff really sharpened their pencils this year. When we gave the directions as far as projecting into the next year, we weren't looking at adding a lot of new personnel, buying a lot of equipment, so it is a very conservative year if I were to describe it. But as the mayor said, the, the, the budget is balanced, which is good and mandatory. Uh, we did, uh, fund most of the capital projects, and through the negotiations with the unions, we will look at the next three years with 2% pay increases, cost of living, uh, so that's very good, that's very reasonable, and that's what the council was seeking, a low, uh, amount that would be conservative going forward for the next three years. Future revenues and expenses, they look promising, obviously, we've seen the national economy and Wilmer, as the national economy goes, so does Wilmer in a lot of ways. I know that we are an ag community, we do have a lot of farming, and how is that going to wash out over the next, uh, couple of years could depend upon our local economy. Uh, our industrial park is doing well, we continue to get people in, moving in and have an interest here, uh, in Wilmer. We are the hub city for the region, and so, uh, as we had a briefing from Aaron a few months ago, the economy here is good and strong, low unemployment. ago, the economy here is good and strong, low unemployment. So overall, I'm very pleased with this budget. And as our finance director said, we'll come back in December with the final numbers. But overall, I'm very pleased and say that this year has obviously went fairly well. And next year should do the same. And with that, I'll conclude.
Okay. I just have a couple, if you want to stick around in case there's any questions for you.
Sure.
Just want a couple other comments that we had asked council members if they had anything to ask for in the budget. We had three council members that did put in a budget request, and all of those requests have been included in the budget. Councilmember Fagerly had asked for some improvements at Sunrise Park. Councilmember Swantus had asked for some help with the intern, helping with the street assessment for city streets. And Councilmember Nelson had a request for including some money for our bikes program. And there'd be some exciting news coming out on that. Rob, I know, was attending the meeting on Thursday, talking about some healthy biking within our community. So I was at a meeting with Rob today, and he's excited about that. And Rob and I have an announcement we'll make during the regular council meeting as well. That's very exciting happening in Wilmer. One thing that was requested from the police department was an additional police officer for a school resource officer with Lakeland Elementary opening. They had asked for another additional position for there. I did cut that from the budget, so that was not included in the police department budget. So if you are going to want to put that back in, the council will have to do that. I removed that position and directed the administrator to send that information to the police chief. I got a nice lengthy email in regards to that, justifying why he needed it. But I believe that that needs to be a council decision. The school resource officers are important in our community. It's not that I don't support that. It's just that we have not implemented the full cadre of police officers within our force yet. And I feel that it's important for that whole cadre to be up and operating. I'm not trying to tell the police chief how to operate his department. But what I am saying is, I want us to be responsible in our budgeting numbers. And so that was the tune of about $117,000 that, that expense is for that position. So as council, if you wish to put that back in, I'm not gonna have any heartburn over it. You just need to understand that I did remove that from the police department budget. So that is not in there. So, and I believe the police chief probably would like to address that at some point, as he's not here now. But at some point, I would guess that he'd want to address that with the council, coming down the road. So with that, I want to commend staff. Again, a 2% increase, I agree with you, Mr. Hollander, is a very nice, tight budget. I think the increase that I am proposing, of a 5% increase on the levy, is something that our community needs. Our community expects us to provide good services. And part of that is that, if you're gonna have good services, you're gonna have to pay for it. The pickleball courts, as an example, I cannot tell you how many phone calls I get on a weekly basis from people about pickleball courts. Pickleball courts are included in this. You know, and so we've, we've answered, when we put this budget together, I tried to make sure that I was listening to you during the retreat. We added those items into the budget. They're in here. And if you want to change that, you certainly have that right. At this point, the council hands it off to the, or the mayor hands it off to the council. And now the council, it's your job to get this through. I, I will be pretty adamant on our funding level and our budget as it's presented. I believe we have a good, solid budget. And I am not looking at changing those bottom-line numbers. So if we're gonna change something, I think we have to move something within the budget itself. That'd be my recommendation to, to you. Councilmember Nelson and I have met numerous times about this. We don't necessarily agree on everything. As a matter of fact, when it comes to budgeting, we have quite a few disagreements. But at the end of the day, we realize that this is what's best for our community, and we're moving this forward. And I believe that both Councilmember Nelson and I support this proposal, which I think you'll see her support of this project as it moves forward. So with that, unless there's additional questions for Mr. Hollander or myself, we'll go on to the next agenda item. Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you. One question is, is there any funding in this budget for the new city office building or?
I removed that from the budget. I think that if the council wishes to have that re, put back in the budget, it was under a bonding item. And so there were no actual dollars addressed to it. We had addressed some dollars that we paid for out of the regular budget, to pay for some architectural services out of the 2018 budget. But for 2019, I did not include any dollars in there for, for that building. Councilmember Nelson and I were in agreement on that. Thank you for your report, and thank you for assisting with the budget. Next, we have the discussion of transferring local board of equalization to the county. And Ms. Thompson.
Mayor and members of the council, before you, is a request to consider transferring powers of local board of appeal and equalization to the county, beginning with the 2019 assessment. In the past, the council has served as a local board of equalization. Council could transfer the local board duties to the county by resolution and use the open book meeting in place of the local board, in which the county assessor's office would designate a date and time for property owners to come to their office to discuss their value and classifications. Property owners who are not satisfied with the outcome of the open book meeting may appeal to the county board of appeal and equalization and/or to tax court. The transfer may either be permanent or for a specified number of years. However, the duties must be transferred to the county board for a minimum of three years, and the length of transfer must be stated in writing. City may renew its option to transfer its duties to the county board. If the council deems that property owners would be best served with an open book meeting, the council or local board of equalization would be relieved from having to make difficult value and classification decisions.
And your recommendation is?
Recommendation is to transfer the local board duties to the county indefinitely. And that would, there'd be three actions that would need to be made, and that would be to agree to transfer the local board's board duties to the county. You'd have to designate the length of transfer, either three years or permanent, and place on the September 17 council agenda for formal approval. And we would have to draft a resolution reflecting said changes.
So this is open for discussion. As, you know, when we used to do the assessing, it would come to us and our assessors would make the presentations. You all have been there the last two years, when the county comes in and does the presentation, and we sit and take our minutes, and then it goes to the next step. So just seeking a direction from the council on what you wish to do here, if you wish to retain those services, or if you want to pass those on to the county. I believe we're the only city in the county that does this. Is that correct?
That I would have to reflect to our county assessor, who is present here this evening.
I didn't see you back there. How are you, Val? Good. Nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor and council, we currently do the city of Sundberg and the city of Prinsburg are both open book meetings. And randomly, we've had some that do go open book for a period of two years, when they don't have proper trained members.
Okay. Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that what's happened, for the two that I've sat in on, is they end up going to the county anyway as an appeal, after we've listened to the situation. And so we're taking our time, and we're taking that individual's time to come to the city meeting, to move on to the county meeting. So I would be fine with this. But I would like to receive in advance a list of those individuals that might be appealing, and to also be able to have an opportunity to, to come to that meeting. So know when the meeting is, so that we could be there if we had an interest in being there. But I personally would support having this moved to the county.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel just the opposite. This group appears elected to serve our taxpayers in Wilmer. We sometimes see it a little differently than the county would as far as valuing, whether it be in a commercial property or a residential property. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to have that open book meeting. I know it'd be a lot easier if we didn't and just handed it over to the county. But I do believe we look at some of those properties a little differently than the county would. Because we're elected by the people that are coming to us. The county is not. Their board of equalization is not elected to, from representing the city. I think we should maintain it, just for the benefit of the taxpayers. It isn't a long period of time. And, and again, we're here to serve, as is the county assessor. Whatever we can do to make it better for our people, we should be doing.
I think the, the local board of equalization sort of seems like an advocacy kind of a piece that you could have, where you can locally see it, and then go to the county to advocate a different conclusion than what the county has made. I have not seen that. It hasn't been utilized in that way, in the couple of years I've been there. But I think that is the intent of it. So I guess what I would like to know is exactly how does an open book meeting work differently? How is that radically different than the local board itself?
An open book meeting, what we do is we designate a, a window of time. Typically, it's nine to noon on a designated day. And the property owners have that opportunity to come into our office, and we discuss with them on a one-on-one basis. It kind of takes some of the intimidation away from it, with bringing it to a board. We actually, still same rules apply. We still have to visit the property before we'll make a value change. And then we would go over the results with them via phone call after we've visited the property, we've reviewed, looked at comparables, and just given a evaluation change if we feel it's worthy, or if it's something that we can't do, to be consistent with the rest of the taxpayers in the community. So it's, it's a one-on-one conversation, and we do still set up an appointment, view the property, and then go back over with them with what our outfindings are. And at that point, they get the opportunity to come to the county board, if they're not happy with the results that we did come up with. And then the commissioners have the opportunity to hear the same stated case, what our outcomes were, what they feel are, you know, not consistent as to what they feel that the value should be. And they get the same opportunities. It's just at the county level, rather than at the city level.
Thanks. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Val, for being here. So the open book, if they call you and say they want to have an appointment, they come in. If they just want to proceed directly to the next step, do they have to send you a letter, then, stating they're going to the next step, and they don't want to talk to you, or?
Well, there is, when open book session, they can go right to the county. So they do not have to stop with me when we do have an open book. When you do have a local board meeting, they are required to come to the local board meeting and then get the opportunity to go to the county level. So it does take that step out of there. They can go right to county.
Okay. And this is being driven by Department of Revenue?
The meeting?
Well, this new rule, they're in charge of you, the Department of Revenue.
Definitely. This is, this is a discussion for you. I have no say in this as far as the discussion.
Yeah. But I mean, it's driven from, by them coming to us. Because they're the ones that changed the rules for assessing, too, the requirements.
Yes, this is.
For the assessor. That's why all these township ones have to drop their part-time ones and have to go with the county.
Drop, I guess, explain the.
The local assessors.
Oh, the local assessors? Okay. That's, that's a state, what, what the local assessors' rules are, is that they have to be, have an AMA leveled licensure by 2022 in order to keep their license. And that's state mandated, yes.
Yeah.
Everything we do is state mandated. And a local board of appeal process is a process that, it's a step in your appeals process to your property valuation, that it's an option for you if you disagree with your values. And it's a two-step process if you choose to make it so. You can come to the local board and then go to the county and/or tax court if you choose. So it's, it's to their benefit if they want to hear it either locally or county level.
But my statement was, Department of Revenue is driving this, and they're the ones making the costs for all the counties go up, because they want everyone to have the same license.
Well, it's the State Board of Assessors, who is where we actually get our license from. The Department of Revenue sets the laws, or what the legislature does in the state of Minnesota, interprets them and sets them down onto us. But it is a license mandated, and much like your license, they've set out new rules for them also, for, you know, appraisers. It's, they've kind of followed similar guidelines and made, we have to have so many CEUs, and we have to have so much education. And, but those are license requirements in order to keep our license.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Elorado, follow me, Christiansen.
I, I just feel that by moving it away from the, the city, we're, we're distancing the constituents from, from the process. We're making it, I believe that when we walk through Wilmer, whether people know us, or we think they know us or not, they probably know who we are. And I believe that by being available to them on that annual basis, I think it's a, a good thing by keeping it, allowing them to have somebody, let's say, in their court, or available to listen, um, listen to them. So I know we work closely with you and the process. And personally, I don't know if I'm ready to let it, let it go. I, I think that being available at the local level is a positive thing for, for us. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one other thing we forget is, is information is pretty powerful. And the information we receive at those meetings, on what's happened in Wilmer, the values of properties, how many houses were sold, the amounts that were sold in the brackets, that's pretty valuable information for a council member to have. That's one other reason, I think, to keep it local, as Mr. Elorado stated. I, I feel it would be distancing ourselves also from constituents. But that information we get, I keep it in my office, and I refer to it once in a while during the year. I keep it where I can see it. And it's, it's, it's powerful information, too, that we receive from the county assessor's office as far as sales and et cetera. So I think it's, it's valuable to continue doing what we're doing.
Councilmember Nelson.
I have mixed feelings about it. I think there's a responsibility, that if we're going to continue to do it, then there's a responsibility that we have to function as a board of appeal and equalization, which means we need to take the time to do the training, and to understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish in that process. And we haven't always followed some of those things. And we, some people have chosen to bypass and go directly to the county, which is fine. It's their right to do that. But there is valuable information, but it doesn't mean that the assessor couldn't give it to us at a different time. So I'm not afraid to continue to doing it, and I'm not afraid to renew the training. But I do think that if we're gonna do it, then we need to be responsible, that that's our function that day. It isn't just about knowing properties. It's about creating equalization and, and respecting values. And so I have mixed, I don't know if we have to decide this tonight, if we want to think about it and, and come back with it. But I think it's important that people have access to, to do that. But I do think there's a responsibility to the council if we're gonna do it.
Councilmember Mesky.
Inactivity on this item, it remains as it is currently, correct?
Right.
The, I, I keep going back to an advocacy role. Again, I haven't seen the advocacy role played out in my tenure on the council, but it, it can exist. And then removing it does take away that opportunity to advocate for a homeowner that feels it's an unjust evaluation. And we can agree where there may be a disagreement with the county. But of course, they will ultimately end that down the road in tax court anyway. But there is, and I still see a value in that advocacy, even though I have yet to see it happen. is, and I still see a value in that advocacy even though I have yet to see it happen.
Next item on the agenda is a proposal for air quality testing at City Hall. Thanks, Val, for being here.
Mayor members of the council in front of you, we have requested two different, at least two different quotes to test the air quality as, among other things, at City Hall. It's unknown if the duct cleaning was, has ever been performed at our current City Hall building. The only cleaning that has taken place was done by chapel as a result of the water damaged area upstairs in the engineering department a year ago. The air quality in City Hall has been questionable for some time and we've always had issues maintaining humidity levels year-round. Mold has been discovered in the building as a result of these leaks during the heavy rainfall. There have been several instances where asbestos has been encountered when remodeling, including the events of a year ago when we had flooding in the building. Building maintenance staff has contacted several companies. We received, only received a quote from one company, that is MAC, M-A-C, out of Montevideo. They're the same company that completed the asbestos removal of City Hall after the water damage and we've worked with them in the past. The proposals that they gave us is as follows. Do a lead air sample per floor. Do mold air samples per floor. We'll do asbestos air samples per floor and we'll swab wipes per each material per floor. That's for a total of six. Hygienist, their hygienist would be running the pumps for two days. Total for the above project would be $2,825. If samples are rushed and overnight shipping, there would be an additional $225. Recommendation would be to authorize the services with MAC in the amount of $2,825.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. First, I would just like to say that that, to me, seems very reasonable for all that we've been talking about for the air quality. My concern is when they just say that they're going to do two samples, my understanding is that some of those rooms are more questionable than others, that there might be a higher concentration of, of mold or something in those rooms. Do we need to have more perhaps on one level or at certain levels or do we feel that two is going to be adequate?
Uh, Councilmember Osmus and members of the council, they gave us the quote on these numbers and so we have an itemized, um, per sample price, if you will. I would anticipate that if they're finding, based on what they're finding, we can add to or subtract cost or samples at that time.
These, these are their recommendations and they are familiar with our facility, correct?
That's correct.
So they must, there must be a two is like the way you do it and then you figure out if there needs to be more, but I have no idea how these are done, so I would assume this is the right way to do it.
I'm right there with you.
Okay, we can, we can move this to the agenda for two weeks then.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have, Mr. Mayor, if I could, thank you. My concern isn't as much with the cost of doing the tests as it is what are we going to do with that information afterwards? I have no idea what it would cost to do, let's say we find out we do have lead, we do have asbestos issues, we do have mold. Now we have to deal with that, right? And how do we go about that? Any idea what the price tag could be? And my concern is investing in a building that we're going to then be tearing down in a short period of time if we need to repair it so that it's in a, you know, the working conditions are adequate or, I mean, so where would we go from here if we do the testing? What kind of liability would we have if we do the testing and find out there's a problem and we don't do anything with it and someone becomes ill? I, you know, I don't know. I'm just, I'd like to know what our thought process is because if we plan on doing the test just to go, okay, we have a problem, but we're not going to do anything with it because we plan on replacing City Hall, then what was the purpose of doing the test? So I'd like to have a plan in place and have talked about what our expectations are when we get the results back based on what those results might be either way.
City Attorney Scott, do you have an opinion on that at all? I mean, if we, if we find something in the building and, I mean, can we just sit and look at it?
I mean, ultimately, that's a policy question as far as what you're doing with that facility and if you're going to build a new facility. I think if you are aware of potentially hazardous conditions in your facility, though, that's something you'd have to take into account. You'd have to address them somehow.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, followed by Mesky.
Thank you. When we were in the midst of talking about new City Hall, I had people come and ask me. And there were some pretty strong statements made by staff that we had problems with pests and we had air quality issues and so questions were being asked. And it appears that we, we're making some assessments. I, I'm, I'm not saying there isn't anything wrong. I'm not saying you don't support a new office building, but if we have hazard, hazardous conditions in our building, then I think we need to know about it and we need to be proactive to what we're going to do. Because maybe if the building is as bad as it's been painted, then perhaps we should be worried about moving city, moving employees someplace else while we build a new City Hall. And if it comes back that there's some steps that can be taken in the meantime while we make our decisions, I think that we've, we've put it out there now. I think we have the responsibility to find out what the condition of our building is. The fact that the duct work hasn't been cleaned, you know, I think we have a lot of old buildings in town where maintenance have been done. I did a tour with the utilities on their buildings and they've been proactive with issues that have been going on in their building for a long time. I think this is a responsible step to do and if we get bad results, then we need to step up to the plate and deal with them because we've made some statements that the community is questioning, the condition of our building and whether it's healthy for our staff to be in there. So I think we have that responsibility to find out.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's probably the responsible thing to do, but where do we stop? I mean, do we do the public works, auditorium, civic center, you know, do we, community center, do we, do we also go out there? They're all older buildings too and some of them leak when it rains, but where, where do we stop? I mean, we're just going to concentrate on the staff at City Hall? Again, it's probably the responsible thing to do if, if those concerns are, I'm going to say legitimate and, uh, but do, do we do the other buildings too? I mean, is that, is that our responsibility to make sure everybody there is breathing the right good air?
Thank you. I agree with what Councilmember Nelson was just talking about. We have an obligation to the safety of our employees and the public that utilize our building. I also agree with Councilmember Christensen of where does it stop? But the fact of the matter is we used, people use this as an argument for a new City Hall that the City Hall is potentially a dangerous place to be and to work in. And therefore, I think we have an obligation to make sure that it is not. And if it is, we need to deal with it. It's not an option to not spend it because we're afraid we're going to find out what we will see. Therefore, we are legally perhaps putting ourselves out if we find out it is a sick building. We have an obligation paramount to the safety of our staff and the public that utilize that building and we cross that bridge when we get to it. If we, if it is deemed a sick building, we have to deal with that. How we deal with that, we will cross that bridge, but to me, the safety of our staff and the public that use that building is paramount and we have got to address that.
I suggest we move it to the council meeting.
I would think that's a good idea.
Make a decision.
Councilmember Elorato.
Um, I agree with Mr. Mesky. I think it's important that we, um, drill it down to the facts and we do what we have to do to find out if we have weaknesses in the building. Right now, it, it, we don't, I don't know that we have anything factual, do we? As far as issues with the building other than site inspections?
No, this, that's what this would, would give us.
But this is like air quality and those sorts of things. That's what I'm understanding.
Air and mold and asbestos, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Or lead.
So I, I believe that in the best interest of our, our community that we, we move forward on this.
Move forward to the agenda for tonight. With that, we'll adjourn for tonight. On the fire department auto extrication equipment, we don't have, I mean, we have two minutes. It's going to take longer than that, so. Is that okay, Mr. Holland?
Well, I think there was some urgency, uh, you know, we're not going to be able to have it on the 10th. Chief is going to be out next week.
Chief, go ahead. We'll address it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll make it quick tonight, so. Once again, I bring forward the auto extrication equipment for the CIP budget. A month ago, I was asked to bring back, get some information, bring back a few facts. I did speak with Aaron Nelson, the chief of the rescue squad, and we had a good, about hour, hour and a half discussion about it. They do have, three trucks are equipped with extrication equipment right now. Anywhere from, the newest equipment is, I believe, three years old to the oldest stuff is 15 years old. He did indicate that they were working on getting some pieces of equipment to replace the oldest stuff this year or maybe next year. Let's see, also, fire departments in the area, there's a few of them that have kind of miscellaneous pieces of equipment that are out there, Spicer, Princeburg, Atwater, New London, I believe Sunberg, but I didn't get a response back from them. So as far as training costs, we would have the manufacturer come out and conduct training for us and besides that, hire independent contractor, probably through Ridgewater College for two eight-hour sessions totaling about $5,000. And that expense would come out of the budget, our operations budget, and also is reimbursable through the state. So I guess, if you have any questions, fine.
Councilmember Elorato, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, is there any equipment that's going to be different than the county currently has?
No, I believe we would, we would get the basics of equipment, same that they have as well, to supplement. Our idea is to supplement their services and definitely not take over for their, for what they do.
Okay. Would you need additional equipment to transport this, this, the, this extracation equipment? Would we need additional trucks or anything?
No, no, that, um, that would be placed in basically what we have of our car accident vehicle, so we have room for it in there.
Um, and I got one more question. Have you ever, have they, has the county ever not been able to respond or assist you on a, on a call when, when that equipment was necessary?
I do remember at least one time, but that was only because we were very busy in the county and they were at other scenes. We did have to extricate somebody out of a car without them once.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Mesky.
Thank you. I've reached out and asked some questions on this and you have a statement on here that I hope that you can expand on a little bit. You talked about this equipment being used for other emergencies, not just for auto extrication. And in the fire, firemen that I was talking to referenced even walls falling inside a fire structure, that they've used their extrication equipment to help lift walls or a heavy object being on top of, that this has been those types of things. So I'm just curious, I have a great deal of respect for the rescue squad and, and as a statement was made to me, why wouldn't we want you to have this to enhance the services with that? Certainly not to replace them. I understand the other fire departments have protocols in place for what they do and they do not do what they, you know, with the training and different things. So I'm just curious if you could expand though on how this equipment is used for other emergencies or things that happen outside of auto extrication?
Um, you're right. It is designed in, there's more training out there to use it for interior stuff where buildings do collapse. You can use it for different types of trench rescue. There's multiple things, not just auto extrication equipment or not just for auto crashes, but there's multiple things out there that we can use this equipment for. So this, this, we're not limiting our scope just one thing.
Can I ask one more? So when you had that conversation with Aaron at the rescue squad, did you talk about how you would work together with the protocols and those types of things or can you share anything additional with how it would enhance services for our community?
Sure. I think, you know, we, we talked a lot about training and, and we do some training together already, but we, we discussed a lot on more training and getting everybody kind of on the same plate. And he was, he was excited about this because he sees it also as the fact that, you know, they're maybe in different areas of the county. They do have three trucks, but maybe they don't have enough people to run three trucks. Right now, retention is tough and to keep enough people on, we may have to be able to use two different services for this.
Councilman Mesky.
I have great respect for the rescue squad and admiration for what they do. Has there ever been a call where the fire department shows up first and needs extraction equipment and have to wait?
Um, yes. Typically, the fire department arrives on a crash scene, just guessing, maybe two minutes, three minutes before the rescue squad does, depending on where the scene is at. We work with the rescue squad a lot where if extrication is needed, we have some pieces of stabilization equipment. So we'll stabilize the car and wait for them to come with their equipment to cut somebody out or open a door.
I don't want to ask the question, but I, I, I've let down the trail and you know where it's going. I mean, every minute matters when you're on a rescue. I know this. I just, so it's, it's not a question. If, if you've been there before and you could have used that equipment to save minutes on somebody who has been injured, to me, that's, that's important. I don't know about the price on these and, and frankly, that's in the conversation for somewhere else, but if, if a life can be saved, $45,000 doesn't seem like a lot, but if it can augment and help in, in those situations where minutes count, I'm definitely going to listen.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree that every minute counts. The chief knows that I sent a series of four questions earlier this afternoon, both to you and to another party in regard, with the rescue squad. And one of the questions that I asked was what the average response time was from the county's rescue squad and how would that change with the new equipment? And they indicated there basically would be no difference in the time to get that piece of equipment there. One of the other questions I had asked is if we'd applied or looked into any grants that would cover this as my work as a co-chair for the Fire Training Consortium for Minskew. We funded these types of things, this type of equipment through grant dollars and so the question is if we have applied for any grant funding for this equipment.
We have not applied for anything. I have done a little bit of research, but not a lot and then found that there hasn't been a lot of grants for this type of equipment right now, but granted, I haven't put hours and hours into the research yet.
You know, it would be my recommendation that we pursue that rather than putting it into the CIP funds. I, I think those funds are there, so.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you get this equipment and the call goes out. Who goes first? Who, who, who? So you get this equipment, and the call goes out. Who goes first? Who, who, who's, who are they going to ask to come out to extricate? Both of you going to show up? If it's just a car accident?
Yes. Right, right now, it's, it's protocol for both of us to respond to all personal injury accidents, both the rescue squad and the fire department. I don't see that changing.
Okay, so then you both show up, and you'll each have the equipment to use, and you'll start using yours before they show up, and then they'll get mad at you. And no, I'm just kidding. I hope not. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I feel like there's two sides of this. We, I think we've been talking about this as long as I've been on the council with that. And I'm supportive of the fire department having these tools and working in conjunction to, with the rescue squad. If it doesn't stay in the budget this year, one of the suggestions that was made to me when I was doing research is that we, at least as a council, step up and support the fact that we support you to have this, to work with this in the future, whether that's through the budget, whether we leave it in the budget this year, or whether it's through fundraising or through grants. But that we don't just shut it down, but that we look at, this is an option and something necessary for our community and for our firefighters. That was the one thing I heard loud and clear from the firefighter I was talking to, was how difficult it was to show up. And even if it's only those two minutes, to even be able to start some of the prep work that needs to be done in order, in order for the rescue squad to function when they got there. And so I, I am supportive of that. Where we go next, I'm not sure. I, I'm supportive of leaving it in the budget to enhance our skills. But I would still like to see the council be proactive with supporting this.
Councilmember Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So do you have room in your existing fire truck that's the first one there to carry this equipment? Or would you get there and then you'd have to call back?
No, we would, we would make room in, in our first truck out.
How, how big is this equipment?
It's, it's four pieces of equipment. It's, it's pretty good size. You know, it's going to take up-
But it would be in the first responding-
That's correct, yes. Yes.
I'd like to see if you could get a grant somehow. I mean, you've got someone over there that knows how to work the system, so. I think she could do it. She recognized talent.
Councilmember Nelson.
I know that you've looked, and I know in talking to some of the other communities, they were able to get like a sing, a grant for a single piece of equipment or some of those types of things. But again, I think as a regional city and as a response, I think we do have a responsibility for this. So I just hope we'll be proactive in getting this into your hands as, as quickly as we can.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.